Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, April 19, 2022, Special Call Meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners. I have asked, first of all, Commissioner, Chairman O'Quinn is out of town today. He is joining us via whatever this is up here. So he's on with us via Teams and I want to welcome him. He's asked me to run the meeting today. So I've asked Commissioner Booker to lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Tosterson to lead us in our pledge. If you'd stand with us, please.
Heavenly Father, we come and bow heads and humble heart, thanking you for this day, thanking you for waking us up, Heavenly Father, with breath in our bodies. Heavenly Father, in the mind to follow your guidance, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to watch over this community, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, we pray for peace, not just around the world, Heavenly Father, but in this community, Heavenly Father, on this day. Watch over us, Heavenly Father. Watch over our first responders, Heavenly Father, our law enforcement, our military, their families, Heavenly Father, as they stand opposed, near and far for us. And Heavenly Father, we ask that you join us in this meeting, guide us, that all the decisions glorify you. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
With hand on heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda today is an introduction of Southeast Georgia Health System new CEO, Scott Raines. And we have Valerie Hepburn and Roosevelt Harris with us today to help us with that introduction. If you could come forward, please, and we'll let you go. Would you come to the podium so everybody at home can see you?
Everybody can see me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We miss you, Chairman O'Quinn. I'm happy to represent Glen County as a member of the hospital authority and want to have an opportunity to just introduce you to the new CEO, but also because some of you were not on the commission during the time we restructured in 2015. Just to kind of give you a sense of how the hospital authority works in conjunction with the operating board for Southeast Georgia Health System. So we have a combined hospital authority in this county, which is the county and the city. The county appoints four members, the city appoints four members, and you jointly appoint one member. So nine members that have the role of oversight, but not operations of the health system anymore. Many years ago, 25 years ago, in Georgia, everybody moved away from hospital authority models, Mike, you've seen it in the many communities you've been in, to more nimble, not-for-profit corporations that could enter into different types of relationships that public corporations could not, that could be more efficient, more effective, more impactful. This community did that in 2015. Frankly, we were long overdue for that. We run health system operations across, really serving six counties, but we have a hospital and a nursing home in Camden County, as well as a number of practices. We have services in McIntosh County, services in Wayne County as well. So we needed to be broader. We worked very closely with the county commission and the city commission at that time to make sure that we move forward with this restructuring in a way that would protect against anybody coming in and taking our health services away from this community, protect the assets that we've invested in so much in this community, but again, give us the ability to be much more creative and efficient in a way that we couldn't be as a hospital authority. So at this point in time, the authority has oversight of the facilities and the property. We still own, you know, basically all the ground that everything is on and the buildings. We have responsibility for the debt. Many of you have admired the construction that has gone on, and it's beautiful. We still owe about $125 million on that, and the authority owns that debt. Do not worry, you have no obligation for it. I know. That's the nice thing about Georgia law is we protect our counties and cities from that. And we have responsibility for ensuring that the operating corporation on which Mr. Harris and I also both serve really attends to the public good that a hospital should be doing. So we protect and make sure that indigent care is provided, that all licensing is maintained properly, and that our work is really about, again, serving the citizens of the community in which we reside, not making money. And we're very dedicated to that. So to that end, we had an opportunity to really bring in a new CEO for the first time with this health system in almost 20 years. And it's been an exciting journey. Scott has been with us now. Unfortunately, he arrived in the midst of COVID in January, but he comes with an exceptional background, having led healthcare systems in West Virginia, Tennessee, and most recently, Pensacola, Florida, one of the premier systems really in the southeast, Baptist, great orthopedic clinic there, ran five hospitals, and he thought it would be great to come to Glen County and be our CEO. So we're excited to welcome Scott, and we're excited for you to meet him. Mr. Harris and I are here to answer any questions you have about the board and our governance, but we're excited for you to hear formally from Scott. I know most of you have met him informally, but...
We only carved out an hour and a half for you to speak, so...
I'm going to impress you with my efficiency right away.
Good start.
Thank you, Valerie and Rosie. It's, I'm humbled to be here. Thank you. I suspect that, like me, you guys oftentimes here, how many opportunities do you have to improve and what's going wrong? And you aren't thanked enough for the work that you do because last time I checked, you don't get paid a ton of money to do this. So very much appreciate being before you all today. Dr. Hepburn's right. I was eight years in Pensacola, Florida. When this opportunity presented itself, I was contacted, took a look, and familiar with the area, have family relatively nearby, and was excited to explore it. And the more I looked, the more I became engaged in looking at it, the more impressed I was by the community, the region and the county that we serve, and the board, both structurally, the authority board, and especially the operating board of the hospital. That was a box to check. The medical staff equally engaged and dynamic. This is a hospital, a health system, that's actually been around and served this community for almost 140 years, since 1888. And when you have that kind of history, there's a preciousness about being able to lead an organization, especially in these times, that you own and you take on that responsibility with a whole lot of thought, a whole lot of prayer, and you want to be a part of a team that is committed to another 140 years of care. And that's what you have in an authority board, that's what you have in an operating board, in all the advisory boards, and that's what you have in an administrator and CEO of the health system. For the nearly 3,000 team members that we have onboard, I stand here before you helping to represent them. And the last two years of their life has been nothing more than the equivalent of going to war. And I don't say that lightly because in fact, there's a most recent study that's been provided by Duke University and Vanderbilt University that says the psychology of a nurse today is that of a soldier who's been at war. And so appreciate that about 800 of our workforce fit in that category. And so caring for the caregiver and being compassionate around those folks allows them to be compassionate for the folks that entrust us with their care, be they insured, uninsured, and wherever they may present to us in our six-county region. So there's a mindfulness that we have with regards to our workforce and our team to care for them so that they can provide what is expected to be excellent care to the community that entrust and serves us. To give you some round numbers, we today have essentially a full hospital and only three COVID patients in it in Brunswick, Georgia. So we're incredibly busy, but as Valerie said, when I came in today, by the way, is day 99 for me. 99, but who's counting? Upon arrival, we were absolutely completely full with COVID patients. We were in the midst of yet another surge, and we had roughly 90 COVID patients in a bed and so many, many more that are out there. We have experienced over the last couple of weeks, days where we've had zero COVID patients, for the first time in over two years. So the COVID situation today is one in which very manageable, true across the region by and large. Baptist, Jackson, I were talking yesterday, Mike Mayo, the CEO there, they're in just the medium, in the teens as far as what they have in their entire system. We have four between here and Camden. We've got that under control for the time being. Saying that, does it go away? Do we see a day where there is no such thing as COVID? I doubt it. We have to learn to operate in the midst of it, and we've, over a couple of year period, have gotten better and better and better and better at that. Kudos once again to our nursing staff, our clinical staff, and our very good doctors. Dr. Hepburn mentioned the construction project. In today's day and time, to be able to say that you're on time and on budget is something to be proud of, and we are on time and we are on budget. That project, we just finished a significant phase of it and opened up an area. We've got about a little less than another year's worth of work to do there. And I give all the credit in the world to, once again, the team that spearheaded this that was smart enough to get guaranteed pricing at a point in time where rates were good, money was good, and you had an adequate amount of labor to get. Today, rates aren't good, money's not good, and there is no labor. So kudos to the team that put that together. I could stand up here and take that hour and 15 minutes up, but what I thought I might do is just close by saying, I'm humbled to be asked to lead this organization, but I'm more humbled by the workforce that works in this organization, and I'm inspired by them each and every day to do a good job on their behalf. And so my job is to make their work easier, and I'm working to do that, and I'm sure you can appreciate that statement. With that said, happy to answer any questions you all may have. I might not have an answer, but I'll try.
Could you explain how the ER works in conjunction with the hospital? I mean, it may seem like we all should know that, but...
So it's a place where if combined the EDs, we see about 65,000 patients a year, have about 65,000 visits a year. And it's about 20% of those patients that present to the emergency department, 15% to 20% are admitted. The other 80% to 85% are discharged home or to wherever they came from. So it's a point of entry for admission, it's a point of entry for trauma and surgery that we do, and it's also oftentimes a point of entry where patients come, get whatever treatment that they need, and they leave. On average, in normal times, the extent of the stay is about a four-hour experience. In the midst of COVID, when we are seeing enormous numbers and have essentially a wing of the emergency department function like an inpatient wing, those wait times and length of time across the country skyrocket to well over six hours, oftentimes well over 12 hours just to be seen in a visit. As we sit here today with the numbers that I shared with you earlier, our wait times yesterday were three hours and 43 minutes in Brunswick. When I walked in the door, I can tell you that when we were at the height of the peak, we were seeing eight, 10, 12-hour wait times or throughput times in the emergency department. It's staffed by a group of physicians, contract group of physicians. The staffing model varies from hospital, hospital based upon size, and an array of emergency department-trained nurses and staff with registration teams that are there. So essentially, it's a department of the hospital and departments of the health system.
So the nurses, employees of the hospital?
The nurses are employees.
But the doctors are contracted?
The doctors are contracted. That's right. But just like the radiologists are, the anesthesiologists are, and the laboratory physicians are the pathologists, those are contracted employees.
And that's pretty standard across health systems all over the country?
Yeah. That same model that I just shared, for example, is true at Ascension in Jacksonville, St. Vincent's, and at Baptist, and there are five hospitals. And it was true in Pensacola, Florida, in the health system that I ran there.
What would it take to shorten the wait time in emergency room situations?
The benchmark wait time in the country is between three and four hours. And you have to appreciate that a true emergency department visit oftentimes is lengthy because of resulting of tests, be it laboratory tests and/or imaging exams. And if you were to come with a chest pain and we were to take a troponin level on you at the bedside, there's automatically a two-hour recheck of that to see what your troponin levels are. So you're going to, if you're suffering from chest pain, whether you had five burritos for lunch or whether you're truly having a heart attack, you're going to have a troponin level check and then a spot check two hours later. So you're likely going to be there. The most efficient experience in that space would be two and a half hours. So we're on par wait time under normal circumstances. In the COVID world, we are absolutely not from a wait time standpoint.
Probably no one is.
No one is. No, sir.
Scott, you might mention urgent care.
Yeah.
Because that's a huge safety valve.
Yeah, so we have, we have multiple immediate care centers throughout the region that are alternatives to emergency department care. On average, across the country, about half the people that come to an emergency department ultimately are deemed non-emergent, right? But that's retrospective. And an example that I've just shared is one way that it happens. I come in, I'm actually having a heart attack, someone else comes in and they have indigestion that feels like a heart attack. Well, everybody's treated as though it's like a heart attack. But at the end of the day, I'm the one that was having the heart attack, and the other person with indigestion wasn't, and that would have been an appropriate immediate care visit, but that's retrospectively said, so hindsight's always 20-20. But it is, and it is a busy collection of immediate cares that we have that are great alternatives to the emergency department. The other thing that I'll just share with you in the throes of workforce returning needing resulted COVID tests, we found here, and it's not necessarily unique on the coast and here in Southeast Georgia, but it's not that common either, that folks were coming to the emergency department to get a negative COVID test, and only a negative COVID test so they could go back to work tomorrow. I would say to you, that's not an appropriate use of an emergency department, but we would see that happen over and over and over again.
What is, how do you do quality control? And the reason I ask this is because I don't think it's so much the length of the stay in the ER, it is how long it takes for somebody to really examine them.
Yeah, we monitor and model those times with regards to door-to-doctor, admission-to-discharge. We have different measures along the way. Certainly, we have opportunities to improve the time to being seen, especially when we're very, very busy. And oftentimes, when you are at a capacity, you have to add in and enroll in another provider. That is not something that has historically been done within this organization in an efficient way. I can assure you, it's starting to happen now. So there's a threshold that you hit when you either need to add another nurse practitioner or add another physician into the fold, and we've tasked our groups to start doing that. Because to your point, you can have an efficient visit, but if you're waiting to be seen by a doctor or a nurse practitioner for hours upon end, that is certainly not a healthy and safe environment to be a part of.
How often does your board meet?
Monthly. The board meets monthly, and various committees of the board meet monthly and/or quarterly.
How large is the operating board?
It's a 13-member board. 13-member board.
And it includes some members that are jointly on the hospital authority and the operating board, some physicians that are in addition to that, two representatives from Camden, which we could not have on the authority, and someone from McIntosh.
And then to add to that, the committees of the board that do look at benchmarking data and quality control, there's a quality committee, a finance committee, facilities and properties committee, et cetera, et cetera, a governance committee.
Scott, recognizing that you probably can't believe everything you read in the newspaper, or any newspaper for that matter, but I think everybody tracks the deaths, COVID deaths, on the bottom of the paper. It looks like to me it's jumped around some.
It has.
I can understand it going up, but ain't nobody getting resurrected. I don't...
In defense of Scott, that's a public health problem.
Yeah, it is. If you look at the numbers today, in the country, just to throw out raw numbers, they're attributing 998,000 deaths in the U.S. to COVID. In the state of Georgia, that's about, there's 36,000 deaths that are attributed COVID. In the coastal district, which is an eight-county district defined by the state of Georgia, there's nearly 1,700 deaths that are deemed COVID. In our six-county area that we serve, that Dr. Hepburn spoke to, were nearly 900 deaths that are attributed to COVID. And in Glen County alone, the number, I looked at it this morning, I want to say it's 350, 345, 350?
It was up to 363, and then it went to 337, and then it was a 350.
Some of that is record-keeping for public health, is they tag somebody, they might be in a Glen County hospital.
That's right.
But there's somebody, you know, vacationing from Atlanta.
That's right.
So they initially get put in the system as Glen County, and then public health figures out, oh, no, they're not really a resident of Glen County, that just were, and so it resorts periodically.
Yeah, well, the rumor mill, you know, started that, oh, no, we're going to recategorize these things. Somebody came in and stayed for pancreatic cancer and happened to test positive, and so now they're, we changed the rules.
It's a cause of death issue from the coroner.
That's right. So it's the medical record, cause of death, that ultimately is the, how it's counted.
A few weeks ago, there was a nurse stroke crossing the street out there. How's she doing, by the way?
She's banged up.
Still banged up?
Yes, sir. Bangged up.
And talk began about a trauma unit for Glen County. Is there any plans?
It's a CON-driven issue within the state of Georgia to be able to do that. We, I would...
CON?
Certificate of Need. You have to apply and be approved at the state level.
The state has to approve trauma designation status.
Right.
Huge staffing cost.
Right.
And very much a loss leader. There is nothing south of Atlanta except Memorial and Savannah. You have to have huge volume. It's really, really, really...
Not on our horizon, then?
Probably not.
Probably not. In Florida, I had a large trauma unit at Baptist Pensacola, not at the other hospitals. But it's also, but that's also a subsidy that comes from the state to establish those trauma units because they want, geographically, you want trauma units available. So I would never say never because I would say to you that we can certainly see the need for what we see that comes through our emergency department, that we ultimately send somewhere out of those 65-ish thousand visits, but I agree with what Valerie's saying. Standing up on our own at this point in time, just the cost to go through the certificate of need process that you might very well be denied is not something that we would entertain absorbing at this moment.
Scott, is there any answer to the $117,000 helicopter ride to Jacksonville?
It's unbelievable what the cost of air, and it's largely unregulated, by the way. It's, your insurance will pay whatever it will pay, and then you're on the hook for the rest. And that helicopter ride, be it to Jacksonville most of the time, right? Is brutal on the pocketbook. Whatever you might be going there for your care, the wallet biopsy that you're getting is brutal.
I got that little card, I'll get keep that.
This could be your post-commission.
Hey, I can't fly a helicopter though. I can't fly a helicopter.
We, I've actually, we owned helicopters.
You know, sort of...
We owned them in Pensacola, and quite frankly, we got out of the business because servicing and supplying and taking care of helicopters is not what healthcare institutions are really, really good at. And we needed to exit the business because the fleet was ridiculous, but there was no shortage of buyers of it because of that very reason. The economics are insane.
And there's, to that end, there's no contract services that would be available that, I mean, this, well, insurance ain't going to pay $117,000.
We have a, we have a relationship with ambulance services under contract to truck.
Yeah.
So we have that readily available. Now, I will tell you, in reference to some other emergency department issues, the availability of ambulances is also a reason why you find yourself backlog throughout your health system. Our ability to discharge patients that need transported solely because of manpower, not exclusively, but largely because of manpower, has also been a burden that's been birthed as a result of COVID and the lack of labor and availability of labor, be it in ambulance services galore. And that too is not at all unique to Brunswick, Georgia.
You're saying there's not enough ambulances?
Not enough. Oftentimes, it's a labor issue of not enough EMTs to work in the ambulances. So we have that problem. It's not uncommon to have a labor shortage of EMT and paramedics, and then when you see the volumes that we see, now you have an issue of, do you have enough trucks and labor? Now it's more, we don't need the volume, the volume issue doesn't exist, but the labor issue continues to exist.
So if somebody goes to Jacksonville, they go on a transport ambulance, not a county ambulance?
It depends.
Usually, they're going to go on a transport vehicle.
Overwhelmingly, a transport... Overwhelmingly, a transport ambulance. We don't, we, certainly, to take a county ambulance out of the county is typically not what you want to do. And so we have, we have a relationship with the transport company that makes that happen. Yes, sir.
Scott, how is, you know, there's a lot of conversation through the last couple of years with all the COVID going on. How is the hospital system reimbursed by the federal government for COVID operations? It all, sort of patient basis.
Per patient, per DRG with a 20% kicker on top of the numbers, what has traditionally been the case.
They don't know what DRG.
If you are, if you're diagnosed with a respiratory condition, there's a number that's assigned through documentation and coding, it's a number that's called DRG. I won't bore you with that.
Diagnosticly related group.
So you're grouped up into that space, right? And the federal government has, actuarially, they said, well, that gets paid at X, and the average, your days in the hospital don't matter, here's what you're getting paid. It's a fixed payment based upon that grouping. And what the federal government has said, we'll pay you for that grouping plus 20%.
And what is that number?
It depends on the grouping. It could be, let's just, let's say $5,000 for a, for this, plus 20%. $8,000 for this, I can tell you that we don't get, we do not get reimbursed for the cost that it provides, that it takes us to care. Because typically, that length of stay in that grouping, let's just say that this DRG says that the average length of stay is six days, right? A typical length of stay for a COVID patient is double that. So we're not getting paid for those additional days.
So pro COVID.
So the idea that it's lucrative is absolutely not the case.
COVID wasn't a profit center.
No, hence, well, I mean, again, I told you, we could take up the whole hour and 15 minutes, and that's not my intent.
And, you know, we did get CAREZAC money.
We did.
You guys, that was not tied to specific patients. And one of the things, Scott was not here, but just to say, you guys know, this health system stepped up to the plate to do vaccines.
That's right.
Testing and masking in a way that many health systems across the state chose not to do it because it was.
That's right.
Costing them, and it wasn't getting them any income.
Yeah.
We, because we are community-based, said this is what we've got to do. So every rally, every opportunity for, we were there with masks and sanitizers and tests and church groups and everything that you could think of. So we didn't make money, but we did get at least paid for every COVID patient at some reduced level.
That's right. Long story short, no, it's not a profit center. Oftentimes, when, not oftentimes, in this health system, when you are at a surge of COVID, you're stopping other services. That's absolutely what occurred here. There are and have been CAREZAC monies that have come down. There's no more money in the pipeline that we see today. Nobody profited. The healthcare industry did not profit in the COVID space.
How do you all ensure equity in care? Because the complaints I get, many are from the black community, and they do not, their perception of this, this hospital, this system is very negative. They'd rather go to Jacksonville or Savannah.
We need to change that.
And, but, is there other efforts around making sure that the same care is given to everyone regardless of what neighborhood they come from?
My stock answer to that is I want to believe that that's the case. Listening to what you have to say causes me to say that needs to be looked in much more deeply, and we are, because I've heard that as well. Our value says that we want to be the provider of choice, and we want to be the employer of choice. Provider of choice regardless of race, creed, or color, employer of choice regardless of race, creed, or color. And that's part of my job to make sure that that occurs, and that's what the board has an expectation of. So duly noted with regards to those concerns. We don't want anybody who needs care that we can provide to leave this community, any more than we want anybody who needs a job that we have a need for to leave this community. Period.
On a positive note, I have a friend that was recently diagnosed with cancer.
Yes, sir.
Went to MD Anderson and also intended to go to Mayo, and went to MD Anderson for the diagnosis and intended to go to Mayo, back and forth every day for the radiation treatment. They got a call from MD Anderson, said, you don't need to go to Mayo.
That's right.
You're gonna get as good a service.
That's right.
At this hospital in Brunswick, Georgia that you would get at Mayo.
And the folks at Mayo will tell you the same. Yes, the folks at Mayo would say the same thing in the oncology space here. Absolutely. I believe that.
Yeah, and my thing is, I think, because we have the CyberKnife.
Yes.
Is, number one, I know that a lot of folk don't know about that and what it means unless they actually have cancer and they're, you know, involved in and using it as part of the treatment.
Yes.
Even the doctors that are involved.
Yes. Mr. Booker, you must, I feel like you were in my office today. We literally were having that conversation when I'm asking, it's arguably one of the best CyberKnife programs in the country, and it's actually an incredibly busy CyberKnife program, believe it or not, by comparison. And yet, it is very much unknown in this region by and large. And so Dr. Jameson and I have had multiple conversations about this. We absolutely will be talking about it much, much, much more publicly to the provider community, especially in the very near future.
You all do a, I think are required to do a health assessment.
Community needs, health assessment.
Needs assessment every three years.
Every three years, we have the preliminaries done.
And the ones that I've seen are very well done. It's following up on dealing with some of those things. And I know you don't, may not have all the resources, but I just feel like they are, the resources are available in this community if we're coming together. I've been in, when I first got on the commission, we had an effort to deal with indigent care.
Yes.
And we looked at the model in Savannah. Savannah had providers together, and the county actually paid for somebody to be the executive director of that collaborative.
Right. It's the lack of a convenor. If we were to write down and list all the various services that were available from hospital to beyond, I think we would be impressed by the sheer number of services, but we're not talking to each other well. And we're not, it's not an unwillingness to collaborate. Everybody just gets in their lane and does what they're doing, and you don't realize that collectively, we're not collaborating to enhance the quality of life of the citizens that we serve. Again, not a unique problem in Glen County. Same thing existed in Escambia County, Florida, and we collectively come together and said, we need that convenor, we need that navigator, we need to commit to meeting and talking with one another to talk about the disparities, to talk about the gaps, to talk about the needs of a community, based upon the community needs assessment that Valerie's speaking about, that every nonprofit hospital in the country is required to do every three years.
Yeah, I found, I mean, they were outstanding, actually.
We're in the process of doing our recent one, and some of the same issues are gonna be right in the forefront.
We have the preliminary assessment in hand now.
Last question for me is around recruiting doctors.
Yes.
I mean, I guess that's the foundation of this, the better doctors we have and nurses, the better, the overall system, I guess. But how do you all go about recruiting doctors and maybe top doctors? I'm assuming everybody recruit you feel like is a top doctor, but.
That's a multifaceted question. Based upon population, you can kind of get data points and say, you need this many of these, this many of those. It's kind of cookbookish, but it's a fair place to start. And then you see our access, you know, do we have length of time to be seen that is extraordinary? And the answer is yes, we do. So that kind of gives us an idea of where we have a need, what does the community needs look like for types of doctor that we have? And then, are we recruiting doctors that look like our community? Yes or no? So another hour and a half conversation around the methodology behind that. We recruit internally on our own, and we also use recruiting firms to help us in that space as well. Just yesterday, we had another interventional cardiologist in that we're recruiting right now because we had a need in that space. We certainly need more primary care. We know where we have some needs. And then, we work collectively with med schools as well directly. So some doctors are out and employed and working, others are coming out of med school, and we are having interesting conversations with med schools right now about training, teaching, and education.
Yeah, what about the training and teaching residency program here?
Works for me. We have third and fourth-year graduates, third and fourth-year students that we teach and train right now, but they are not residents. They, they would then progress into a residency program, and so we're having dialogue around residency right now. There's an undertaking there that you have to plan for. If you started today, you wouldn't see your first resident for two years easily, probably three years to begin with.
What middle school schools are you at, skating with?
I'm sorry?
What medical schools?
Medical College of Georgia, for sure. That's where we see our students. So we're exclusive to them at the moment, not by contract, but just because, but we are open. But the Medical College of Georgia, certainly predating me, has been a good friend of the hospital and vice versa.
What about, my nephew is there, so keep an eye out.
In a residency program, which is post-medical school, you can get students from all kinds of, any medical school, because they go through a matching program, and they apply and seek your residency. We're looking at internal medicine. We got some money from the General Assembly last year and this year to study that, which would be a huge help for our recruitment, because then people would come post-medical school, do a rotation, decide they like it here.
Yeah. That would be another method of recruitment, but it comes at standing up an entire department to help make that occur. We're in the midst of that study as we speak.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was a pleasure to get to have this time with you today. We thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Scott.
And speaking to us.
Thank you, Valerie.
We are here to support you and serve you, so please let us know. Don't hold your questions.
I'll be in touch. I have some ideas.
Good.
Good, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Item number two, item number two on our agenda today is receiving EMA update. And while Andrew's coming forward, just want to thank you for the job that he's done since he came on board. We hear so many good and favorable reports. We thank you for hitting the ground running.
All right. We have a little presentation to give you a little bit about what EMA is working on. I'm gonna give you a program overview here. All right, so, there we go, let's see. All right. I have our mission statement here. Nothing has changed with that. We're still exactly the same, caring forward. We are hitting the ground running. So I come here, of course, with a history in Columbia County, and the one thing that I tell you that you have a gem here is your county staff and how well they prepare their own plans. I just want to point out Pam here, everything that she does for the EOC and everybody here is just, it's unbelievable that you have the folks that you do. So that's, that's the biggest strength that I see here, is just amazing staff and the willingness to work and be prepared.
She's a heck of a cook, too.
He's not gonna come to my restaurant.
So, okay, so we, like I said, we're keeping, keeping moving along this year. And so what we do in a nutshell, we develop and maintain these emergency plans. We're gonna do a really good job doing that from here on. We're gonna keep a planned maintenance schedule. We're gonna make sure that plans are not just something that lives on a shelf, it's supposed to be a living document. So that's something, you know, people say, heard, you know, rumor, oh, well, EMA only works three months a year. There's gonna be no question that your EMA directors at work all the time. Probably get sick of hearing some of these emails and updates from me, but we're gonna stay on it. So we're gonna maintain a planned database and a maintenance schedule, and we're gonna coordinate with outside agencies as well, say, I'm just gonna pick on somebody, maybe it's the, well, the hospital, I reached out to the emergency preparedness counterpart at the hospital, and we reviewed his plan together, and we talked about things. So that's all gonna happen. I'd like for this to actually happen through our LEPC, kind of expand a function that maybe not. I understand the LEPC was one of the biggest and well-known in the state, but through COVID taking a hit, it's kind of backslid a little bit, so we're gonna get that up as one of the functions that we do as a plan review as a group. All right. Obviously, you see our public emergency information that we're sending out. We started already on Facebook, Mike and IT got us hooked up. Awareness and education programs, I'm gonna talk about that in just a little bit. Of course, our coordination with the service agencies, we talked about that. Our community warning systems, so we're gonna work with 9101, we're gonna look into IPOS and what that might do. I know we have the Code Red system, but coordinating, essentially coordinating alerts with all our agencies. So if we send out something, JEC will send a joint one, and we'll be able to share the same message to their database, so we're gonna make sure that we're interfacing the right way. And then, of course, our state and federal agencies, we're the point of contact. So we are the agency that puts the right people in the room to answer the what-if questions. Isn't that right, when you say that from your experience here? So I try to keep my PowerPoint a little light, right? So we're not just death by PowerPoint. I don't have too many of these. I love history, and, you know, then versus now, I don't know if you track EMA, where we came from. Of course, it was civil defense, military attacks, and natural disasters. I kind of roll through, you could read that there, but we were worried about air bombardment, and then we, the nuclear weapons. You see all the really cool stuff that I collect from eBay, that you'll see eventually in my office that I'll start bringing up here. Of course, 1979, the federal level, then we got GMN 81, and then we have ours established here with 158 counties, and there's our ordinance number that we have for emergency management. So that's the kind of history. I do a longer version of this PowerPoint for when we go out and speak to the civic groups, but I'm just kind of giving you a few of our main slides to cover. So what is a disaster, if we ask Google? It's a sudden event such as an accidental catastrophe that creates a great damage or loss of life. That's what Google defines, but wait, we do so much more than these disasters, frat beach, Georgia, Florida weekend. I mean, there's a lot of things that we're involved with. We're working right now with, on marine safety, and gonna work with Lisa and some of her folks on some initiatives. We're gonna, EMA is, sometimes it's the gear, and sometimes it's the grease in the wheel, you know? So we fit in where we need to. We're not always the incident commander. Sometimes we bring the group together. Like I said, we put you on a rope, you all make the most informed decision possible. All right, storm rolled in, hitting backup my data. That's something that we're seeing a lot right now, cyber attack. So that's something that we're in coordination with, with IT, making sure they're getting all the alerts and updates. And of course, when I came in, Deborah was already on topic. So that's something that we're just gonna keep that moving forward. Now, this is something that I'm sure you all see in the EOC. Are you all familiar with the Hurvac Decision Support Tool? All right, so this is the program that we use to track the hurricanes, and it helps us allow our evacuation decisions to be made. So it's our, it's our decision-making tool. And right now, we just had an evacuation study with Duberry and the Army Corps of Engineers, and the team is getting ready to put together a meeting on May 3rd, an internal team, and we've invited some different folks to come and participate in this meeting to hear about what Duberry's findings, the new evacuation information, and then potentially look at our zones to, if we would want to reassess the need to change our zones with the information that we have. So that's coming up, we're staying on top of that. So like I said, I came in here, it's a project that GIS was already working on. Another thing I came in on was the Hazard Mitigation Plan. We had a meeting today with the CRC, and we're gonna get that ball rolling very, very soon. We're having a meeting Friday to list our stakeholder team, and we have our planning team set, and you're on that planning team as well. And so you're gonna receive a bunch of information that's gonna come out on that. We're gonna do this. One thing that we're gonna do this time is we're gonna really, and I don't say you didn't do it last time, but we're gonna ensure that we have public involvement. So we'll have a special meeting that'll allow public to come in and make their own comments and be heard. So we're gonna allow that, but we're still gonna let our core team work on the actual work that needs to be done that's assigned to us. But we'll also incorporate that public comment as well. Of course, you all know a good bit about the Incident Command System from the trial, and that's something that we're gonna make sure that we incorporate in the best way seen fit. You kind of had the FEMA FLETC version, you know, for the trial. You kind of had the FEMA FLETC version, you know, for the trial. And you kind of do a departmental version of ICS right now, from what I understand. And we're going to make sure that we're meeting our requirements set forth by GMA and FEMA, that we are NIMS compliant. But that's, it's going to look something like this, but we're going to have, you know, a different type of system. We might include ESFs in our tabletop exercise that we have coming up. So we're not going to reinvent the wheel before hurricane season. I feel like that's the worst thing that we could possibly do. But we're going to start the ball rolling on initiatives and keep you informed of what's going on to make sure you like what's going on. We're going to have all the leadership team and our responding agencies and stakeholders on any changes that we make so we're all changing for the right reasons together. Hurricane tabletop exercise is going to be held in June. The reason we're doing it in June after the start of hurricane season is because we didn't have any EMA or director say, yes, we're going forward with this. And we needed to give the National Weather Service a little bit of time to get it ready. So, but we are still moving forward with the exercise. It's going to be a big one. It's going to be Hal's last one. And we've already, Hal Sandrick is retiring. But we've already been, I've already been involved with exercises with the new meteorologists that are coming on to ensure they have a continuity of the product that they give. So that's pretty exciting. That's going to continue to happen. Ben's going to be with us. I don't know if you remember that gentleman from NOAA. And he's going to carry us forward on these next ones. And we still continue to do one every year. And next year, it's going to probably be a little bit different. We've talked about having a series of small exercises with individual departments before we get into the big exercise. So we're going to, this year will be the same. We'll meet our requirements. And next will be a little bit different. And you might have some more involvement on that. We might have some class for you, for y'all, an ICS class to take for government officials. We might include that in next years. All right, so we talked about the volunteer-supported programs. Right now, we have the search and recovery team, the amateur radios, which are now getting an updated station in the back of the EOC. You remember the room at the very top, it was a closet. That's going to turn into the redundant, or the communications for amateur radio. So we'll have that station set up. And next year, coming soon, we have the Glen County CERT, the Community Emergency Response Team. And we're going to start this in 2023 to expand our volunteer base. Our goal is a group of about 300 citizens that are certified to be on the Community Emergency Response Team. It's a real interesting, fun way for us to, for the volunteers to stay involved. This training is, I'm going to cover what it is here. It's disaster preparedness, team organization, psychology, radio communications, fire hazmat, a little bit of medical, light search and rescue, and then a simulation that we do with the team. It's a very excited, very exciting program. It's done in a lot of other counties where I came from. In Columbia County, we had at least over 600 go through the training in the time. So 300 is a realistic goal for us over the next few years to have. We might do these classes once a year, but we already have a very strong instructor base that we can pull from, from our fire guys and our search and recovery team members. So it'll keep us connected. And it's what it's essentially going to do is it's going to, we're going to share common knowledge base with the CERT members, and we'll enable them to work together. They become a spontaneous responder in their neighborhoods to meet the lower priority needs. So CERTs are trained to help themselves and the people that are in their neighborhood. So when we're teaching them about, you know, utility cutoffs and whatnot and, you know, light first aid, that's something that, you know, we wouldn't have EMS available during this disaster, so they'll be able to take care of themselves. So the main first responders, the law enforcement officers, EMTs, and firefighters can focus on the incidents that have greater impact on public safety. So, as our little Lego people. All right, so this is some of the things that they're going to do. Locate utilities, extinguish small fires, injuries, light search and rescue, and relieve survivor stress. So we'll have some stress incident management training available to these folks. They'll probably have a kit that'll look somewhat like this. This was the kind of standard kit that GMA put out. They had a grant for a lot of these kits. I think we can do a little bit better if we just purchase some of this stuff ourselves. We don't, we're not going to create rescue, what they call rescue randies. These are just going to be informed citizens with a little bit of this training over a several week period. They might have some of these items. They'll be self-sufficient. They'll know to listen to the weather alerts. They'll be familiar with it. Like I said, the utility shut-off tool and whatnot. And that's what we have going on right now in EMA. Does anybody have any questions?
Go ahead.
I was just wondering, all this information that you have to provide, and you have to provide it to the public at certain times, especially during hurricanes or whatever, evacuation, information that you may need or not, or should need. Is there a possibility that we, that you could prepare an app for Glen County residents? Or is that something that is marketable through our IT department or Glen County? That tracks a storm?
Yeah.
So you showed maps of that, the type of equipment you need for an emergency kit. And people could go to this app and say, okay, well, this is coming and this is what I need to do, and, you know, evacuation zones and time factors and things such as that.
That would be great. I mean, it's just a matter of funding for something like that.
Is that an expensive endeavor?
Would be.
An app?
Yeah, but we could get with IT to find out some kind of pricing. We can, we can look into that. That's something that would be phenomenal. So we have Code Red, which we ask people to sign up for. That's an app that it's an opt-in emergency alert notification system. Are you familiar with that?
No, but that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, so Code Red is a system that, now, it's owned by Code Red. So it's Code Red, the company, well, it's actually owned by another company now. But that, if you sign up on our website, we always are going to, so in Columbia County, it's going to be exactly the same how we did it here. We had Code Red. We pushed every time that there was any kind of emergency or disaster, or we always start pushing the Code Red, push Code Red, push Code Red, because we can directly send people information. We can send them information to their device and say, hey, you know, go on here. This is, this is what's going on right now. So we do have Code Red. We have the EMA dashboard on our website. We're going to be able to push that as well, where people can see a live map of what's going on, what you see in the EOC. We have that, but we don't have it all consolidated into one thing. That would be really neat. Code Red is somewhat limited by characters of how many you could push through a text message. So there is a limitation. So, you know, email. We do do our Facebook. So we use Facebook as if it's like an app during a disaster. That's how we're going to use it. We're going to put all our information direct people that way. If you're interested in an app, we can, we can look at that endeavor.
What about, I mean, don't we have with our county card or something to get information off of that, that little?
On the back of the county IDs, that's what you're talking about.
Right. I mean, doesn't it have?
Seven, eight?
Yeah, I think it's just got the employee hotline number on it.
That's what he's talking about.
Okay.
Well, I thought it was something else that...
It's supposed to be for...
On the cards, on the business cards.
We used to have a QR symbol, QR code.
Right, right, right. We don't have that anymore.
That would take you, no, sir, we don't.
See, like, that might be used. I mean, didn't it have information about the county when you go to that code?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, you know what? Is that it?
That's it.
It'll be around a while.
Can I take a picture? Can I see what that leads to real quick?
I never knew about you.
This got your contact information on there. Okay, well, you know what? This is a fantastic idea.
You can have that. You're paying for it.
You're paying for it.
Let me look into this. This is not something that would be very expensive, like, for us to have the emergency signup and all the information on this card.
Sure, that Sammy was talking about.
Yeah, this, you know what? This actually would be a really good, to give the location for emergency signup. I can direct them directly to the EMA page with something like this. And that's a fantastic idea. This would be easy to hand out.
All right.
Code Red's really effective for letting you know when something is really close and with constant updates.
Yeah, so Code, so Code Red, you know, what's cool, if you download the app, is if you're into another county that uses Code Red, you're going to get their alerts. And if there's severe weather, if the severe weather is going to hit, if this is the state of Georgia and it's going to hit up here and it's not going to affect us, it's not going to send you alert and warn you. If the polygon is coming to your location, you're going to get the notification. So pushing out Code Red is going to take an effort from all of us. So if I, when I get these cards made, it's going to be something that we can all share together and say, hey, emergency alerts, keep a stack of these with you and say, this is where you go to get the information. That's something that, you know, I want to, I want to build a calendar where every year, you're going to, you're going to see. It's going to be basically a production calendar of the different EMA items that we're going to push every month. You know, this month is going to be a Code Red month. Next month is going to be hurricane safety month. You know, you get where I'm saying, the initiatives that we're going to start pushing. So we're going to start having that once we get the ball rolling on some of these other big projects.
My concern is, in my district, there are a lot of folk who can't afford to leave.
Yeah.
And so, and I think, you know, we've tried to figure that out. And, but part of it also is helping folk to understand the impact if they stay, that basically they would die depending on what the event is. And trying to get them to understand that. So some kind of tabletop, some kind of exercise of getting information, or even just showing them the impact of a, you know, a hurricane, a mild hurricane, that, so they can see that if you stay here, you'll be, this is what you have to deal with, you know?
Well, the, okay. So I give presentations now about hazardous weather. This is kind of a version of what you might see. I have a weather game that we can play with smaller kids, you know, weather fact checker. I have great information from Dubey with this latest evacuation study. And our flooding basin is now the Charleston basin, all the information, that we have the best information that just got published. And what I've asked for from them and from our GIS department is to have the best graphics that we can possibly have and the best mapping. That way, when we put out these warnings, we can really show the citizens what we expect for them. So I want, and I told them I want that before we get into hurricane season. So I will have that. If you have anywhere that you want me to speak...
All over my district.
You just, please, please get with me and let's work together. Now, here's what I want to tell you that I found. Nederite program. I'm going to just tell you what I found. I came in, I signed up for Nederite, put in the, my email, the email address on the computer, and I never got a notification as the EMA director that anybody signed up. Went to IT, said, Deborah, where did these go? They were set up to go to Alec's email. And I looked on every file that I could possibly find, looked twice. I have no record of anybody that's ever signed up for the Nederite program.
Well, I know that's not true.
I'm telling you, there's no, there's no record.
So?
We're going to start the program aggressively. And if you are in your area, yeah.
So, who, who was over that? Was Alec the one over there?
Yeah.
Have we reached out to him to ask him, where's the information?
I've asked him.
Because I know that there's been people.
Oh, there's, there's been people that's signed up, but there's no, there's no record of them. They got deleted, is what I'm saying. The database is gone.
Who would do that?
I guess one thing, you know, and all of us are long-time residents here, one thing to just keep in mind is, we're now, now I'm back on the board. And I know Commissioner Brunson had to really step through on hurricane events, the commission. But the only catastrophe I remember of a decision by the county in my lifetime was when we had one lady that was chairman and the decision, I think it was during Hugo, but it was in order to evacuate everybody at one time. And that was catastrophic on all the roads going out of here. I don't know if y'all remember that phrase, but it was, it was a disaster. So I just would encourage to keep that in mind as the protocols go forward, that we avoid a call, the results of everybody evacuating at one time.
Part of, the thing that kept me up at night when I took this job was evacuation. I'll be honest with you. The, the group that I'm bringing together for this evacuation study meeting, that honestly, when, I think it was when Alec or whoever was the last EMA director, this is when this project started. And then it just kind of, the involvement fizzled out. I don't know what happened. But we're here now, we're going to move forward. I'm bringing back together the team that needs to be in the evacuation study group to make this recommendation to you, to answer your concern, so we can get these clearance times, so we don't have that same mistake. Because I worry about the same thing. And I feel like we have the Army Corps of Engineers, we have FEMA, we have Dubey Consulting, all these people in this project with the most up-to-date information. And all this information is going to be entered into Hurvac, so we can make this, so we'll have these clearance times for evacuation. So that's what I'm doing to mitigate. And then what I've, and I'm talking to our long-term care facilities and our partners in public health and the hospital. We're going to make sure they're right there in the room when we're making these decisions because they need a little bit of lead time, too, to get their patients out as well. Because there's nothing worse than 10 hours in a ambulance.
Especially, especially the retirement homes on the state.
Yeah, especially if you're stuck on 341 and there's no bathrooms and nowhere to turn or turn around or do anything.
So I have some items in red. One of them is the Nederite, and I'm, I'm ready to work with you. Whenever you can give me time, we'll, we'll get that list back to where it needs to be. And you'll be seeing the proof of what we're going to do with our group when our group gets together. And May 3 is the meeting. The only invitation that, I know there's rules about how many can be together, commissioners in a meeting. We sent the initial meeting to the chairman. But however, you all need to do that, I don't know how many can be together once we put it to a meeting.
Three.
So...
Four constitutes a court.
So three, you know, Chairman O'Quinn, if you can hear me, whoever you'd like to attend, you know, however you all want to come to that meeting so we can have, because it's going to be presented to the board for the evacuation study after this. So, all right, thank you for your time.
You did a great job. Appreciate it.
Item number three is a request from Judge Harrell, but I, as I understand it, he had a hearing this afternoon that created a conflict. So if he should come before we finish our meeting today, we'll give him a space at the, whenever he comes in. Item number four is a discussion on opposed text amendment to Glen County zoning ordinance, section 723, to allow for administrative approval of revisions to a master, a PD master plan under certain circumstances. That was a mouthful and a half, Ms. Thompson.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Board. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. This request is actually coming to you at the suggestion of Commissioner Neal. The current issue you've seen recently is residential developments that are zoned, planned development. At the time, they were rezoned 15-plus years ago. They were approved with a master plan, and that becomes their zoning ordinance. So the street layouts, the detention pond layouts, all of that is set in that zoning ordinance that's sometimes 10, 15 years old. And what occurred in Glen County is there were phases of those subdivisions, phase one, two, three, that county staff approved 10-plus years ago and didn't check that phase against the master plan. So it was laid out differently. And, you know, I can't speak to why that was done, but there's something in the field that exists that's different than what's on that approved master plan. So then, you know, we had the recession, development stopped, and a lot of these neighborhoods that this code impacts didn't have any construction for eight, 10 years. Fast forward to recent history, and now those subdivisions are wanting to build phases three, four, and five and continue on development. And so when our current county staff looks at these, what's in the field and what that phase is that's submitted does not match the master plan. And we did confirm with our legal counsel that because that PD master plan was approved by the board, that's its zoning. So for it to do anything different than that, it has to come forward to you all as a PD zoning amendment. So in recent history, you've had three of them, and they're actually requesting to amend their master plan. You've approved all three of them because they're just matching what's already developed in the field, and there's no way to match that master plan that's on file. So the proposed amendment would only apply to those very specific situations. We've had staff look back, and it looks like that might be about 20 developments to allow them to finish. And the proposed amendment would allow for administrative approval of that master plan revision to match what is already existing in the field. So I'm going to show you an example. If you look at the top left, that was the master plan configuration that was approved for phases one and two of Tanglewood. And if you look at the bottom right, you can see that that's not what was built. So when you're looking to come build phase three, that master plan says you should have a different road layout, a different detention system than what's already existing in the field. And so this is an example of one that came to you to, to match up. Here's another example. This was Autumn's Wood, and again, y'all approved the revision so that they could continue constructing in, in connection with the already developed phases. And then most recently, this calendar year, you've looked at Majestic Oaks, and you amended that so that they could continue construction. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Commissioner Neal has suggested that we make that proposed amendment to allow for administrative approval. As you know, going through the approval process of a rezon can take three to five months to get through a process versus an administrative approval. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and I'm hoping you all can give me consensus if you want staff to move forward and bring you this proposed text amendment.
You're not changing, you're not changing the PD text. You're not altering the PD text.
Correct.
You're just changing the master plan.
Correct. That road layout, the location of detention ponds.
And that's not specific to the PD text?
No. The PD text says things like what types of houses are allowed, what density is allowed, that sort of thing.
But it also, the PD text also addresses stormwater.
It doesn't say, it, it says stormwater has to be addressed, but it doesn't say where you have to put your utilities in the ground. Where the utilities go isn't one of them. The main thing it impacts is the location of the roads and how they tie in, and then the location of those detention areas. If you see in the master plan, Tanglewood had, had suggested that they were going to have two smaller detention areas, and when they, that's that box in red. And then when they got out in the field, they decided to combine all of their detention into one pond.
And let me, let me point out here, commissioners, the approved master plan there was not ever what got built. Staff approved what went in the ground, which was totally different than the master plan. I don't know why they did it, but, but that was what was done. And then when you come back to do a subsequent phase, and they tell you that you got to cover up a 17-acre pond and put in the streets according to what was there in the master plan, you, you understand that that's an impossibility. What was done in the past and, and why it was approved, I, I don't know how we got to where we are, but to, to go forward on these, to try to go back to an original master plan that was never implemented in the first place, it, it just doesn't make any sense to have to, to go through that three-to-five-month process of getting your master plan rezoned so that you can move forward with a phase map that connects to what's actually in the ground out there as phase one, when you're connecting phase two. And that's the reason I was saying that it, something like this could be done administratively to, to correct these moving forward, so.
I understand what you're saying, but, I mean, from the master plan on the top left to the actual phase one and phase two, which I assume is the PD texts, are, don't even look like the same planet.
It does, it, it doesn't look like, I don't know where the master plan on, on this particular development, I, I never saw the original master plan. All I saw was the subdivision layout as it was approved by the county. So, so I, I don't know, I don't know where that master plan came from, where it was.
Pam, flip over to Majestic Oaks, which is one we all dealt with. Why, why, why would this be advantageous in that particular property that we had to deal with?
Well, I don't know that advantageous is the right word versus what, what the connections were shown in that master plan is not what they actually wound up doing. They had a different separation of the types of lots. And I'm looking at Ms. Leaf because she made, she worked on Majestic Oaks and can respond more directly to that question.
You've been around that long?
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, so in the Majestic Oaks example, a lot of it was, they were looking to, you know, to develop right in this area, and that, let's see, I don't actually do this, but, yeah, this area they wanted to fill in, and then this area over here. And as you can see, there's a very detailed plan, and that's not something that they necessarily wanted to follow. This had been a very specific plan developed, you know, at the time, and then this, you know, project didn't come to fruition. So they wanted to have more flexibility on the road layout and do some different things. So that's why they needed to amend it to, you know, allow that more flexibility there.
But I mean, is that one you would consider the administrative, because I, I thought that was probably a pretty good discussion that we had, as commissioners and citizens could weigh in on that.
I, I will say the difference of this one, the difference between Majestic Oaks and the other two was that they were asking for other changes also. They decided to take the opportunity of having to come to the board, to ask for some different uses, and do, wind up doing more than just changing their concept, their master plan. That's all they had to do. But Autumn's Wood and Tanglewood are examples where all they were asking was to change that master plan so that it matched what was physically in the field.
So when y'all would look at it, then it would still have to go through engineering review if they're changing their, their original concept of having the retention ponds, obviously that's going to change, so they're going to have to come up with another concept, and you're at, that could be improved in-house is basically what we're, what the idea is.
Yes, sir. So the first step is they submit a preliminary plat, and the planning team checks that against this master plan, and that's where they were getting stopped. But once that preliminary plat is approved, then it goes to construction plans and engineering and all the other sub-disciplines review to make sure all of it works and all the calculations are correct.
Basically, what you're doing is you're eliminating any public, what do you call it, public, not comment, but public, public hearing. And if you were changing the PD text, you've got to have a public hearing comes to zoning check. So we're changing them. Good luck.
Yeah, I think, you know, some of the concerns are being mentioned. I think that'll get down to, you know, what the actual proposed verbiage is that we work on for the amendment, because, you know, right now, what, what is, you know, keeping us from approving something that comes in is because the, the code currently says if there's any changes to, to street layout, any changes to lot lines, well, definitely in the Autumn's Wood and Tanglewood examples, that's exactly what happened there. So, you know, so we, you know, the commission can be as, as narrow in their scope as they would like to be to ensure that the bigger, more complex changes still go through the public hearing process, but maybe some, you know, more minor changes that don't have the adjacent neighbor impacts, you know, could be something that is administrative.
And that's my concern is not allowing public input of us, or even us to have a decision about it, if, because if the decision is made by the staff, the neighbors will come to us, not to the staff.
Yes, sir. And your decision, the decision I'm asking y'all today is, is this proposal something y'all are interested in letting the planning commissions and then you again, listen to and discuss? You would still have the discussion and the decision on the actual verbiage and how, whether you did approve it or not, and what, how narrowly you tailored the language.
Right. I, I think it's a good idea, and, but we, we would need to make sure it's specific so that to God, if, if it's not Pam or Stephanie in these jobs, I mean, I, I trust you guys to do it, but we've had some people that, anyway, you all know because you came and cleaned up some stuff. So, so that's my concern.
I'd like to, I'd just like to see the list of the 20 properties and 20, and, and that would be involved.
These, these three properties, two of them were properties that I developed. The third one out at Majestic Oak was one that I had authorization as agent to modify the master plan, which was the one that's approved up here. I, I never, the economy crashed, and we never bought this property and went through with it. There's, there's a difference in, in Autumn's Wood and Tanglewood in that what got built and approved from the time that I purchased the property originally was always what's on the ground out there. I never saw a master plan. It was never discussed. I went through, I went through design, construction, pre-con meetings, all of that. Nothing was ever mentioned about a pre-existing.
Master plan.
Master plan. I, I saw what was on the ground. I bought it, I bought Tanglewood in, in particular. It was already under construction and underway, and I bought the Autumn's Wood property and went to the pre-con meeting the same day. So it, it already had designed, designed on it. But, but that got, that was what was in the ground. That was what was going to be built. When I came back years later, the Tanglewood people that bought that property came to me and said, they're telling me that I've got to build what's, what's on the left-hand side of the screen over there. There's no way to join the streets to do a street configuration the way that was done. There was no way to tie into it. It was an impossibility, and yet our ordinance says that you've got to go through a rezon, time and money to, to do that, only to go back to just be able to join onto the streets that was in the ground out there that the staff approved at the time. This predates, I think it predated you as well, Stephanie, but I know it, it predated Pam. It, it doesn't make sense to have to go through that entanglement. Now, when you get out to Majestic Oaks, because that engineer wanted to not only change what was being done in the Magenta lower area, he, he said, let's go ahead and do everything at one time. So it becomes more cumbersome, but the layout of, of this lower section was still substantially the same as it was before. The street connection points stayed the same and that kind of stuff. Everything up in the purple up top was a different master plan altogether. I can understand a, a division there that says that's got to come back. What they wanted to do was change the master plan that never got, I got it approved, but I never implemented because I never bought the program, so.
Well, on your Tanglewood thing, what did the final plat approval look like?
The fi, it was a final platted by phase, and it's what's out there. So when you pull the recorded final plat, yes, sir, it looks.
That's what got built. And you see there's a 17-acre pond on the bottom, so that takes care of the stormwater.
That was the final plat approval?
Yes, sir.
This was what was approved by the county and, and moved forward. You know, obviously, you can't go back to whatever configuration that was. So it makes sense to be able to fast-track. I don't know, it may have predated, dated, but it makes sense to fast-track that you don't have to go back through the rigmarole of this as we're trying to get, get set back up to.
Streamline.
To streamline it. Time is, time is money, and, and these things that obviously, we couldn't go back until any subsequent developer that they had to develop the thing that's on the left-hand side of the screen. It was, it was an impossibility. So I'm trying to, just, just trying to, some things are common sense, and it, and it, they ought to be able to make those decisions and move on without having to go back through months of time and delay. And, yeah.
Just a couple more thoughts of mine for District Two. Since PD text is all that's left on the island, I don't know that that caveat would work for my district, if people would want to, want to hear and know anything that happens out there and to bypass that. The only other option might, might be is some sort of parachute where it might be administrated, but the chairman maybe would have to sign off on it, or, you know, sort of like either sign off and affirm, affirm that your decision in the department, or roll it over to, you know, a hearing.
Yes, sir, and, um.
I don't, what do you think about that one?
I mean, I think anything that would expedite, you know, and go through, this, this was an exercise in, in futility.
Frustration.
Frustration of, of, of course, we can't build what's, what's on the left-hand side. So why should it have to go through all that time spent to, to get to what was actually approved by a county commission and in the ground that's, that's pictured on the right-hand side? And Rhonda, Chairman O'Quinn says that he is offline. I don't know if we can help get him back on or not.
Man, I think there ought to be some sort of parachute where, you know, the chairman, he would have to come to a final sign-off by the chairman. I understand what you're trying to do.
Or, or, you know, maybe, maybe county manager or county manager and, and the chairman or something that, that, I, I'm not trying to circumvent the public's right to input. I'm just trying to say, there are no other choices. This is the way it's been, and so.
Well, that's what I was saying, with the chairman, he would have the option to say, well, this might be sensitive, or we'll refer this over to public here, type of thing, or something like that.
All right, this might be a question for you. What, what document rules, a master plan or a, the PD text? I mean, what, what is the prevailing registered document?
In this case, it's one and the same.
They're the same thing.
Uh, what's approved and in the ground is, is, they're saying does not take precedent over the master plan.
The, and, and Aaron's probably less familiar. We worked with these specific examples with Will Worley, but the master plan, the, the plan development text says incorporated, and is part of this language, is the attached master plan. So it ties itself to that master plan. So we were in a position where they physically couldn't build the next phases it was shown, and we couldn't tell them yes to building something different because that PD text referenced the master plan. And one thing we can do, if the majority of y'all would like us to work on potential solutions for this, we can get with the attorney's office, because right now, we have certain things that can be what we call an administrative variance, where I would send out a letter to the neighboring property owners, and if I don't hear from anybody within 15 days after that letter, then I can approve it. Versus if you do hear from someone, then it goes into the regular variance process with the public hearings.
I know about as much about this as you can probably put in a thimble, but the PD text is the zoning document. It is the controlling zoning document. If you, if you deviate from the PD text, then you're, you are deviating from the zoning.
Yes, sir.
Okay? So therein, that's the catch 22. I'm just not real familiar with master plans. I know a little bit about PD text.
Well, and you have to look, this, this isn't, this isn't something that you look at going forward. You look at what you already have in the county. And, and the county historically has approved these things that varied from what the recorded master plan was, but they, they approved it. It got built. It's, it's in the ground. So now, now what do you do? And that's what we're trying to do, and you, you identified 20 properties that.
Oh, perfect. Yes, we've got the list.
And this is, and this is the proxima Sina's research our staff did, and there may still be a couple more out there, but. Majority of what we found, a lot of them are actually down at exit 29, off of Highway 82, down in that area. There were a couple off of 99, but really, the majority were exit 29 area that, that fell into that 20. Commissioner Fendig stepped out, but we did not find any on the island actually that fit into this category, because they're either already built out or nothing hasn't built yet. So a lot of the PDs fell into those categories where nothing was ever started, or they're completely built out, and so we're not running into this issue where there's future phases still to go.
It looks like everything's in my district.
Yes, yeah.
Everything.
Yes. I believe that's correct.
So, so what we're trying to do is just. So, what we're trying to do is just for those properties that are already in the ground, give, give a way to move forward more expeditiously. If, uh, if it's new stuff coming forward, we're, we're not changing anything. So.
Correct. If, if, if the ma- if that plan development text has not developed at all, they would have to meet their master plan with their phase one, or they would have to come to you to ask for a redesign approval. This is only for ones that have concrete in the ground and utilities in the ground that don't match their master plan.
And when, when I was bringing this to staff, you know, you've got to, you've got to keep in mind that we are now absorbing most of the dormant subdivisions in the county. If we don't facilitate that growth, then the spillover is going to go to Camden County where there's already thousands of lots. Once those people go there and build, they're off of our tax rate. They're off of our tax structure and they're coming back to, to Glen County to work, but they're paying property taxes in Camden County. And, and there are literally thousands of lots just across the county line in northern Camden County. So, uh, you don't want to make it so cumbersome here that they spill over there for convenience. And that was the point I was making then as, as one of the drivers, but.
Everything you say, it makes absolute common sense. I don't have any problem with any of it. I, I'm just a little bit. So, a, all PD texts don't have master plans?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So, this, this, what we're dealing with here is the quagmire of PD texts that have master plans that won't work.
And I would say they have different levels. You have some where you just talk about concept areas and you'll have a, you'll have a plan. It, it's about the individuality of every PD text because like this one, they laid out the roads and the detention and told you where the lots were going to be. And then we have some where they just made a big red square and said, this red square is commercial.
Why would, why would a developer put out a master plan that would handcuff, handcuff his PD text?
Usually change the ownership. And, uh.
Okay. I mean, I just.
Yeah. The, the original guy comes in, this is my plan. He sells it, goes under whatever. The next guy comes in and says, well, I don't like that plan. Well, the county should have 15 years ago said, okay, here's the master plan. You've got to adhere to it or apply for a change. County didn't require that. So, a lot of, a lot of this is, is, is on the county's back, uh, prior.
Right.
To any of us being here.
And Commissioner Bronson, let me clarify. Every PD text has a plan attached to it. They all have different levels. Some are this detailed and some are just that 300 acres over there can have residential.
Again, on the island, the same kind of example is what happened at Hampton Point. Some of them have site plan.
Right.
And, and we had the issue of a commercial inset that nobody was aware of, you know, knew about. And then that, that all of a sudden with the residential development out there, they found themselves now with a, uh, commercial piece of property in the middle of their neighborhood. So.
Well, I propose we move forward with this and do what makes sense. How about that?
So, I guess then are we hearing a consensus that we can move forward? Go.
I'd, I'd like a chairman's sign-off on that.
So, you'll bring us back a proposed?
That can be in the final. Yeah. Let them bring us a proposal.
Okay. We'll bring that back to a future work session.
Okay. Thank you. I, I know this isn't particularly fun, but, uh, but I think it is important. So. So, thank you. Thank you for bringing it.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Well, uh, item number five on our agenda today, uh, for this short meeting is envision Glen zoning update timeline update to include additional public involvement. Ms. Thompson, uh, you need a bottle of water before we move forward?
I'm, I'm doing all right right now. Thank you. Um, Commissioners, Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. I've got Stephanie Leaf, our Planning and Zoning Division Manager here. On the line, we've got our two, uh, lead consultants that have been working on the zoning code update with us, Caleb Brassicott from TSW and Woody Giles. So, they're available, uh, in the background to answer any questions. As you remember, um, y'all asked us toward the end of last year, beginning of this year, to come up with an approval timeline for the zoning code update and to have it done by the end of this calendar year. So, this was the first timeline that, uh, was adopted by the board on March 3rd of this year. Once this timeline was adopted and then, uh, version zero was released, you did receive some feedback and you gave staff feedback that, um, this timeline needs to be adjusted to allow for opportunities for additional comment. To give you history again, really quickly, this was adopted, uh, this contract was signed in January of 2019. The board at that time asked for an extended period of public outreach to make sure that the community was able to participate in this. As you can see that list in 2019 of the meetings we had, the planning commission meetings, we went to First Friday, a four-hour workshop on the island. We, um, had a survey online that got over 1,100 responses, which is a significant response rate. You can see what we did in 2020, continuing that. And again, so a lot, some of that moved to virtual because we entered the pandemic. And then in 2021, um, with the new composition of the board, we attended your October work session and showed you the list of, um, policies that had been proposed through those public outreach sessions, sessions to be worked on and changes drafted. So, you all directed staff and the consultants to, to get to work on that on October 19th. And at the end of December, uh, beginning of January, that draft version zero was sent to staff for staff review. We have since released version one and the only changes in that were some, um, were staff comments. You then, um, got ideas from the community and ideas on how to increase your public outreach. And so, uh, you directed staff to look at our proposed timeline, look at these ideas and see what changes can be worked on to get more opportunities for community feed-in. So, one suggestion was that the IPC and the MPC that are currently the stakeholder group for this zoning document update, that they form a subcommittee to meet once a week through June 3rd to comment on version one. And then they reconvene, reconvene once version two is available so that they can report out to the full planning commissions when making their recommendation to you. You had another suggestion from the community to reconvene the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. That was, uh, two groups of 17 from the island and the mainland that provided input and were the steering committees during that comp plan update. That committee sunsetted in 2018. And the suggestion was that that committee review version one and have four meetings between now and June 3rd. There were some additional ideas from the technical stakeholders, that the technical stakeholders group, those are, uh, your professionals in the field that are going to use the documents. So, engineers, um, surveyors, architects, et cetera, that they hold more than one meeting on version one. And again, version one is the current that's out right now. Members of the public was an additional idea that if the planning commissions form a subcommittee, that a public comment could be added to those subcommittees. And, um, also there is a suggestion that we have a virtual open house so that citizens could go online to our website, look through all the changes and provide comments. Staff, Stephanie and I have met with TSW and Caleb and Woody are online. If you have any questions to review these options, um, given the number of meetings and to ensure transparency, staff is recommending, um, for the public meetings to have a series of meetings focused by topic rather than trying to have meetings focused by stakeholder group and potentially missing some count, some county stakeholders. So, um, the planning commission, if you wish, would form that subcommittee and they would have meetings after these public meetings. And the suggestion is, for example, if you see that table on the right of your screen, that you would have deep dive public sessions where the consultants would be available to answer questions about the proposed draft. And again, this is version one. It's the initial rough draft and it is designed for feedback. That's, that's what it's there for. Uh, rough drafts are never set in stone. So, this would be a series of, uh, nine additional meetings that would be public meetings. And then if you wanted after these four meetings, uh, not four meetings, after different sets of these meetings, this information could be taken to the planning commission's subcommittee. So, we've got some alternatives that we would like you to give us guidance on. Again, the one clear thing we've heard from this full board is that we want it adopted this calendar year. And every time we work on something, um, you know, we push that timeframe for public input and 2022 adoption a little shorter. So, alternative one, you could, um, our thoughts, alternative one is revise the timeline and work with TSW to have deep dive public input sections, sessions. And that would be in coordination then with, uh, the subcommittee from the planning commissions. Alternative two, we could work on other options, I apologize, for public outreach. That would include proposals from outside facilitators. Woody and Caleb are, uh, based in Atlanta, Georgia. And so, we definitely can work with them to get them to, to some of these meetings. Some would need to be virtual. So, if the public outreach, um, some of those meeting weekly suggestions that we received would need to have assistance from outside facilitators. And then of course, you can, um, direct us to stay on the current timeline we have now. So, um, I'm available. Stephanie's available. Caleb and Woody are available online to answer any questions and to get some guidance.
Let me jump in because a few months ago, we adopted a timeline.
Yes, sir.
And, and with that, we extended it 30 days to, to have, uh, when we adopted that timeline, to have input from the stakeholders, the professional services people, uh, around our community to be involved in dissecting this draft and, and giving feedback to it. I, I didn't see that today. Uh, we, and, uh, and time is ticking against that timeline and to my knowledge, not one meeting has been set with these, with, with the stakeholders. So, I'm, I'm wondering where we are here versus, uh, what we did in that, in that meeting to set our timelines up so that we could get to the people that, that this is going to affect, plus the people that in, in the public. I thought we were working toward a, a combined group that would dissect this thing piece by piece and, uh, and, and bring back their recommendations. And I think if I remember correctly, we had talked about the IPC and the MPC maybe, maybe driving this boat, but, but that those things were going to be done. I.
No, sir. Um, so we've.
Before you answer, does anybody else not remember it that way?
I do remember that one. And, and I think not only just the planning commissions, a couple of people off the zoning appeals board were being in looking at it too.
So, this purple arrow on this screen, this is our current timeline. This is what was proposed. And if you see this, the gray was the technical stakeholder. So, yes, that was proposed to be scheduled for the week of May 27th. Um, this original schedule, version zero was not going to be released to the public. It was just the staff working document to go through and catch typos or grammatical errors and to make any comments staff had. So, this was not going to be released until the last week of March. Uh, version one, it was released March 11th. So, as part of that, the, this adopted timeline had the, had the draft going to the full joint planning commissions. There was no subcommittee proposed as part of this timeline. So, as soon as this, um, was adopted and as soon as we released all the emails on March 11th, y'all immediately started hearing feedback and getting those suggestions for the subcommittee. And so.
I, I didn't, I didn't get subcommittee suggestions. I don't know who did, but I didn't. And, uh, and, you know, part of what we want to make sure of, it, it, the planning commissions may have given you those suggestions. Some of the commission may have. I haven't heard that. But, you know, moving this thing forward, you know, when we had to release this thing, it, it's like turning in your homework before you finished with it and you start getting judged and graded on it. It has been particularly, we never as a board, to my knowledge, ever contemplated approving 10-acre lot minimums out in the county or, or ban of vinyl siding on St. Simon's.
Correct.
Never. But it's in those documents and, uh, and we're having to deal with that. So, it's important that we start these meetings sooner rather than later so that we can go through this, so that we can get rid of the, the stuff that we never intend to approve.
Yes, sir. And that's exactly what the purpose of those early versions is. If you remember, we took all that citizen input and that's what shaped and informed the draft that's in front of you. We didn't have the feedback as to what that actually looked like. So, the code was protect farmland by requiring larger than the current half acre, but it was never, that 10 is just a holding spot to talk about that.
You know, and, and you know, of course, it, it's not how the public.
Yes, sir.
Proceeds with when they're dissecting this.
Yes, sir. And, um, so the meetings, so I was directed to work with Stephanie and see what options we had to include more input opportunities. So, we had not scheduled any of those meetings figuring out how many different opportunities and what course we were going to be directed to go on because that would change what meetings we scheduled and had and with who.
My thinking would be, we get these stakeholders together and start striking the stuff, the, the low hanging fruit that we know we're not going to approve, start getting that struck and out and, uh, and, and quit looking at this document in the whole and start looking at it in part.
Piece by piece. That was that dividing it by topic that seemed to make sense. So that, and I think not you people that, I mean, you, you're very familiar with the ordinance because you use it in your day-to-day job. Um, that 180-page document can be overwhelming. When we break it into nine sections based on topic, then you can start chipping away at it. We just needed direction because we were asked to, we were asked to prepare and let you all know what would it take to, uh, present to a subcommittee of the IPC and the MPC. They requested additional meetings. Somebody requested re, reconvening this, the comp plan committee. So, this, this timeline did not envision that.
But, you know, uh.
Right.
So, I don't know where that direction came from. For me, I'm not seeing it. Didn't. I just don't know where it came from from my standpoint.
So, let me, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
The biggest heartburn I've had is the design standards, that section three or whatever.
Right.
Design standards. I mean, talking about controlling the pitch of a roof and parapin on front of a flat roof.
So.
No vinyl siding on the island.
Yes, sir.
It just goes on and all the windows, doors, the whole shutters, the whole thing.
Yes, sir. So, what if we do this? What if, uh, do y'all want, so the board's already given me the direction and this whole process was set up where the 14-member joint planning commission was the recommending body and who public comments went through to be filtered and you all get a recommendation. Do you want us to convene all 14 of them to go through this? Or let them allow themselves to create a subcommittee if that's how they want to tackle it?
Personally, I, I would think you could go to the 14, let the, let the two planning commissioners, because they may decide to do something different. Uh, may, may decide the whole board and the island may decide. I, I don't really care. I just, I just, timelines are critical. Uh, I know the chairman does not want to push this out past the end of the year.
Correct.
So, we, we've set September and we agreed to try to do that, but if we can't get started, we can't get finished.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, uh, that, that is my concern because I do not want at any point in time that I stated in a previous work session for us to be crowded in to a decision.
Yes, sir.
Because we hadn't, hadn't had the time to dissect and, and study it.
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's where my concern.
So, hearing what, hearing the direction and suggestions that I had already received to prepare this for y'all, to work with the consultants on this, um, what I would like. to prepare this for y'all to work with the consultants on this, what I would like to do, what I would like to do is go to the two planning commissions, ask them how they want to digest it. Do they want us to meet with all seven of them or they, or do they want to have a subcommittee that tackles it? And then for our public meetings, I would propose us having nine public meetings. They can all be held in a central place like the library in downtown Brunswick by topic so that people that are interested in design standards, they can go, if they're Island general standards, they can go to that meeting. If they're mainland general standards, they can go to that meeting. So they're not sitting through the whole document if their interest is in one particular area. And as we get that, we'll invite the planning commissions to those meetings, but even if they're not able to attend, we will funnel all of that public feedback and comment to the joint planning commissions and then let them recommend changes and deletions and revisions to you all.
And what, what I'm still not hearing succinctly is, you know, when we did the short term runs, we got the stakeholders at the table, a cross section of our community, but the stakeholders were at the table. I'm not hearing where the stakeholders have a seat at this table and that's what I'm so adamant about. We've got to get the professionals at the table that this code and ordinance is going to affect as well as the stakeholders in the community that want to have a voice where it goes. I recognize their right to have the voice, but our professionals have got to be at the table when this comes. And I'm still not hearing how they're getting involved, included.
So I will, so on March 11th, I sent the link and all that to the versions to the stakeholders, let them know the timeline and let them know that we'd be in touch with them and I have not been in touch with them to schedule a meeting. So I'd need to schedule at least one meeting and see how they want to tackle it. So far, I haven't heard back from the technical stakeholders, but I told them I'd reach back out to them so that, I wasn't expecting that. That being said, can I take what I believe, Stephanie, I believe you and I got some feedback and Caleb and Woody today on what you want to hear from us and just put together a memo for y'all to give confirmation of, of here is the process we're going to follow so that once we set this all up, I know what meetings we need to cover and need to schedule and can, can plan all that feedback. Does that sound okay coming back to, and when I say come back to y'all, it would be Thursday. We'd have a memo available by Thursday so that then we could start. I'd have the memo to y'all of, of what we proposed to tackle this, not dates, but the number and type of meetings and have that on your Thursday agenda and then we would get started scheduling it.
Pam, I don't think there's an appetite to do away with the board of appeals, first of all.
Right.
And I think they should be included with the planning commission in this. Maybe not all of them, maybe two of the five or three of the five.
Okay.
But I just, I don't think there's any appetite to do away with that, is there? Anybody?
And that proposal, you're correct. That, for example, was a proposal from TSW because they, you can not operate with a board of appeals and the direction they were receiving earlier is what's the most way to streamline these processes. So that was just one proposal and that's what this process is for. So that's something that we can easily accommodate and.
I think it would, it would have us involved in every, everything that came, that was kicked back.
Right.
Where the appeals board now is, before it gets to the commission, they look at it.
Okay.
Well, I think for, you know, my perspective of entering into this was, well, this TSW study kind of been sitting on the shelf and, you know, we're, I'm definitely struggling with the issues on St. Simons and trying to create ordinances that would help meet, you know, what's happening over there, which is entirely opposite of what's happening in Brunswick. So all I ever had and studied through was the originally summary report of TSW. And then all of a sudden, I, like everybody else, you know, and I'm agreeing that we're going to get these regulations up and going and moving them through. And then I got the full report and I think just like everybody else has reacted like I reacted, oh my gosh, there's, there's a lot of minutia junk is what I call it in there. And I, you know, I'm not going to blame what's happened in the past. We've inherited, we want to do something about it, but that document that came to us that we're dealing with now is, is not, you know, is not going to proceed well based on the feedback we've gotten. So I, you know, my appointment to the island is, is the current chairman over there, us three, and I, you know, heard from other people and I'm just, I think that, you know, their suggestion and I sent it to the commissioners, because I asked them to send it back to me a day after we've had some discussions back and forth, was to, you know, form a committee appointed by the mainland and the island with additional community partners and that have knowledge of the zoning and kind of go through this a section at a time and kind of weed it out and then come back, you know, with it to us with a package. I know that delays timeline a little bit, but I mean, I don't think we have a working document that's going to thrive.
And I think, in view of that, we're, we're looking at anything close to its current form will fail in its entirety. And, and all the effort to this point would be in vain if we don't get started and break it down by, by section and, and get, get the stakeholders at the table and to work through it. And so.
Yes, sir.
If we, if we have to exceed the, go beyond the September timeline, so be it, but, but we don't need to go past the year. And that means we've got to, we've got to get at this. And so, and I know that maybe we're confusing you somewhat, but it's trying to make sure that your understanding will.
Absolutely. And I'm about to ask you, what I was, the discussion I heard just a few moments ago was we want the joint planning commissions to be the steering committee and the group that does the deep dive and they can decide if they tackle it as a whole committee or they create a subcommittee of themselves. I heard that and then I heard Commissioner Fendig say a committee with citizens on it, which is different than a subcommittee of the planning commission. So I want to make sure.
Or the island planning commission cannot point people from, I'd never intended that the island and the mainland planning commission were the sole participants in, in processing this document.
Okay.
They can steer a, the boat, if you will, to, to make sure that we've got the stakeholders at the table, but never that they were the sole members of the committee that decide what our code and ordinances are going to be going forth.
Okay.
And if, and if that misunderstanding came from a previous meeting, I don't think any of us.
Oh, no, no.
Expected that, that they would be the sole deciding factors in, in what future codes and ordinances.
Yes, sir. And, and as a reminder, in 2019, when we set up this project and worked with TSW on the scope of work, the direction that I had at that time was that, was that the joint planning commission was the filter for public information and would be the 14 people who would give y'all comments. So, so this is just me shifting our approach to, to do what the current board wants us to do to get this public input reviewed and get comments in.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments before we?
So do we need any kind of motion or instruction or you got the gist of going to letting the planning commissions take the lead and?
So what I would.
Stakeholders involved?
What I would like to do, what I would like to do is prepare, and I'm just going to say a memo, the list of the meetings, I think y'all want us to coordinate to make sure we give every opportunity and give that to y'all Thursday evening for you to add to the agenda and tell me, did I hear you correctly today? And communicate that.
The planning commissions need to weigh in on that.
They need to be driving the boat. They don't want to be the only ones, but they need to be driving the boat.
Reach out to the chairs of the planning commission, memo, copy them as well to say, you know, as early as you can to move that. If we can't get it on Thursday's agenda, then we'll do it beginning of, you know, the next.
May, May 5th, okay.
Yeah, but, but ask, ask, make sure that we're all on the same page.
I'll do it.
Do you, do you see a problem, Pam, in changing that approach, letting the planning commissions go back to take the lead on this and let them appoint some stakeholders or subcommittees to?
Oh, no, sir. Uh, no, sir, at all. If you looked, so I want to tell you my perception of what's occurred is that we provided you a timeline that was supposed to do that. We originally provided you a timeline where staff looked at it just for the technical issues and then it was given to the planning commissions for them to decide how they were going to interpret public hearing. And then y'all got some feedback. Everybody should get the document at once. So instead of just giving the document to the steering committee for them to decide how they were going to review it, it went to everybody and then everybody told y'all how they thought it should be reviewed. So you're now telling me, Pam, please do what you suggested and give it to the planning commission and work with them to incorporate all those other voices and people and stakeholders to get this back to you into the finish line.
And let's see what that looks like.
Yes, sir.
Touch base with them.
Yes, sir.
The bottom line is.
This is a community plan. It's a community document. It's got to have community input.
And also, also it.
We got the first round of input.
Other commissions after us.
Yes.
You know? The bottom line is, me and David want to sign this thing 1231 and quit.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I told you that would be your last.
And let me tell y'all this, throughout this entire document, so the direction that Stephanie and I received in 2019 was that staff was not to draft this document. It wasn't what we wanted, it was going to be what the community wanted and that was how this process went. So I have no pride of authorship of this. And if somebody sees something wrong or you get an email, you know, this section is horrible, I need details. What section do you want to cut out? Commissioner Brunson just told me, I don't need to be worried about roof pitches and that helps me. That's detailed feedback so that we can give feedback.
Material. Yes, sir. But I mean, this all, I think, needs to be, the boat needs to be steered by these planning commissions. And I mean, if you just open this up to the world, it's going to be like herding cats.
Yep.
You're not going to get anything done and you're going to be talking about this three or four years from now. I think the planning commissioners, we've got seasoned commissioners back there, Mo's back there, he knows what's going on. And we've got planning commissioners that can, can drive this, this ship and we got, you know, we just give them the chart and tell them to get it done. Bobby, you got, you okay with that?
I'm good with it.
All right.
All right, thank you. And I'll get in touch with everybody, get this memo done and get it back to you.
All right, thank you.
I'm not going anywhere.
You're not going anywhere. Item number six on our agenda this evening now is receiving update on SPOSS 26 to projects with Ms. Thompson and Mr. Austin.
All right, first one is the L-MIG. We, it was out for bid, we got the bid. Bid came in about twice what we thought it was going to be. So I've got a motion before finance to down scope and rebid.
And Commissioners.
Only had one bid too.
Oh goodness. If I could point you to that summary table on the bottom of the first page, as you can see, our completed projects went up by one, our projects out to bid has gone up and projects under construction has gone up.
Thank you, that's, that's important. Thank you.
Canal Road, this has a bid out, this has a bid out for design that's due back on April You asked us to go back to the original design on this, so we are getting back in touch with people, seeing what right of way can be acquired and bringing this back to you.
Paddock Road, they're working on box culverts. They've got two or three in the, two of six in the ground and started the third one today.
That's she?
That's me. Oh, we have some design challenges here that we're working, that we're adjusting right now with the pond design team. And once we get those settled, the contract will be ready to go.
This is out to bid, it'll be opened April 28th. This is under construction. We just received this grant Thursday on your agenda is you hopefully approving all the paperwork to accept the $10 million plus grant to get this project underway.
Praise the Lord.
This is out to bid for design work closes April 28th.
We've worked out things with Fletz.
Yes, sir. And actually, Mr. Stewart and Paul, Mr. Andrews had a meeting with Mr. Fallon and some others at Fletz and it was one of many things they covered.
Great.
That's really good.
Yes. Golden Isles portion of it's.
Hung up for a long time.
I apologize. Phase one is underway, it's bid opening for April 28th and then the second portion is moving toward design. This one, Hornet was packaged with South Palm and those are out for construction and will be opened April 28th. Again, that's the one packaged, so April 28th. And that's it.
All right.
Do y'all have any questions for us?
Comment. I think that since we've, you know, in the last year, we've made substantive advancements in, in where we are on these projects. Just want to say thank you for pushing these things. I think we have an end in sight and I appreciate that work.
Sir, thank you.
All right, I'm looking at our attorney who's nodding his head, know that we have no executive session agenda for this afternoon, so.
Best news I've heard.
This is a work session, so we don't need a motion to adjourn.
We need a motion to adjourn.
We don't need a motion in a work session.
Commissioner, Chairman O'Quinn was trying to make a comment, apparently he's having connection issues and that knocked off line.
He want to text somebody?
Does he want to do, call him and put him on speakerphone? We're past four o'clock, I don't know if it's allowed to.
Yes.
Especially if we're about to 5:00.
Hanging up north, hanging out in the city there.
Oh, I'm calling. We're trying to get Commissioner O'Quinn on the phone, I think, I'm sorry, Chairman O'Quinn on the phone, I think he's.
He had some input on the TSW item.
He's not answering.
All right, so.
He'd sent an email earlier, I don't know if that's what he wanted.
I'm, I'm looking, I don't, I don't have anything from him.
Go in once, go in twice.
Yes, we did, we, we did. He, he didn't answer. So not being able to get in touch with the chairman, at this point, we all stand adjourned.